And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Happy holiday. I'll call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Yes, I am Santa Claus. Ask Mr. Krupp, our county administrator, to take the role.
Good morning, Santa Chair.
Thank you.
And Commissioners. Not the Elfs. Yes. Well, I wasn't gonna go there. We're joined this morning with County Council's Stephen Madcor and, as always, Mary Rathke, our Clerk of the Board. I'll go through the role. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
I was gonna say Commissioner Elf Smith.
Here.
Commissioner, no, he's saying, don't do this. Commissioner Savis.
Here. Are there cookies?
Say that again?
Are there cookies?
Are there cookies? There could be. We could go get some for ya, so. And Santa Chair.
Sure, absolutely. I'll go by that. Here. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first order on the agenda is a presentation. Mr. Krupp.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry, I messed it up. We have with us today, for our entertainment and yours as well, the New History Minstrels. And it's a play on Christie minstrels, if some of us remember the music from those days. So I'd like to invite them up to sing a song for us.
We sing all over the state, but we love this county. This is where we got started here. It's all the fault of the Tourism Development Council to help us bring this act together. We teach history. We'll share just a little bit of history. Got something special to do for the Chairman of the Board, and then we're gonna end with a very patriotic song, give you a little of that history. Tell us who we are.
Well, this is, I think this is four people up here, so it should be a quartet, I think. So to my left, your far right, is Ken Cox, he's our tenor.
Hi, everybody.
Yeah. And we have Jerry Hermanson, he's our lead. Harry Hermanson, he's our lead.
Yes.
And we have our baritone, Jerry Herman, and he kinda mixes everything up. And my name is Steve, and I try to do the low stuff.
There you go. Now, this song commemorates on December 1826. You never hear the story told. Captain Cooch.
Coochie coochie.
The great explorer from the east coast left an island offshore in New York Harbor. It wasn't New York City yet. And the island was covered with little fluffy vermin. We'll talk about that in a second. With three ships.
I think that was Nina, the Pinta, and the Santa Maria.
No, not those ships. No, it was something else, alright. And they left and came around the Horn of South America to begin to explore the west coast first. First Sir Francis Drake's place, San Francisco, right?
That's where I left my heart.
Then the major port on the west coast, besides that, the Port of Milwaukee.
Yes.
That was the great port. And on that island, he said goodbye to his wife. And this song commemorates that. The island was covered with rabbits. Some people called them Conys back then, okay?
Here we go.
Oh, goodbye.
Hello.
(singing) Oh, goodbye, my Coney Island baby. Farewell, my own true love. True love, my honey. I'm gonna go away and leave you, never to see you any.
Never gonna see you any.
I'm gonna sail up on that ferry boat, never to return again, return again.
So, goodbye.
Farewell.
So long forever.
Bum bum.
Goodbye, my Coney Island.
Hee-haw.
Goodbye, my Coney Island.
Hee-ho.
Goodbye, my Coney Island.
We all fall for some girl that dresses neat.
Some girl.
Some girl that looks so sweet.
Some girl.
We meet her on the street, then we'll join the army.
Army.
A married moose to the altar.
Just like leading lambs to slaughter.
When it's over.
Oh boy.
Oh boy, we get it good. Bachelor days we then recall, we then recall. Rich man, poor man, beggar man, thief, doctor, lawyer, merchant, chief. We all are bound for. Goodbye, my Coney Island baby. Farewell, my own true love.
True love, my honey.
I'm gonna go away and leave you, never to see you any.
Never gonna see you any.
I'm gonna sail up on that ferry boat, never to return again, return again.
So, goodbye. So long forever.
Bum bum.
Goodbye, my Coney Island.
Hee-haw.
Goodbye, my Coney Island.
Hee-ho.
Goodbye, my Coney Island baby.
My, my Coney Island baby.
That's the chairman of the board resource thing, so. Please consider that. Mr. Chair, please. Now, when they got here, you hear the story. Captain Cooch, Asa Lovejoy, Mr. Pettigrove, they all kinda conspired together to form a new city called Portland, they named in Oregon City. It was called Stump Town. That's true. Got down all the trees. But when they, when they got here, they were having problems with wild animals. This song is about what we know the Chairman of the Board would do if he had a problem with wild animals. Go on in here and join us.
Now, I want everybody to know, I had no idea this was gonna happen until Jerry demanded it as he came in.
Right in here.
We're here because we care.
Am I the wild animal?
No.
No, you're the.
It's about your friend. Imagine 1843 arriving, and there's wild animals running around Oregon City. The picket fences aren't keeping them out. The goat got loose. Yep. This man took care of the goat. John's goat.
(singing) John had a goat.
John had a goat.
Was feeling fine.
Was feeling fine.
Eight six red shirts.
Eight six red shirts.
Right off the line.
Right off the line.
John got a stick.
John got a stick.
Gave him a whack.
Gave him a whack.
Tied him right to.
Tied him right to.
The railroad track.
The railroad track.
The whistle blew.
The whistle blew.
The train drew nigh.
The train drew nigh.
Poor, poor John's goat.
Poor, poor John's goat.
Was doomed to die.
Was doomed to die.
He gave a groan.
He gave a groan.
The goat of awful pain.
Of awful pain.
Coughed up those shirts.
Coughed up those shirts.
Flag down the train.
Flag down the train.
Thank you, John. Thank you so much. Still on about my goat or not. Good job, David.
Thank you, Bernard.
Nope, the two was it. We got, we got three more, three public hearings.
We'll ask you, God bless. God bless America.
Do it quick.
Okay.
Thank you.
There we go.
We better hurry.
(singing) While the storm clouds gather far across the sea. Let us swear our allegiance to a land that's free. Let us all be grateful for a land so fair. As we raise our voices in a solemn prayer. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above.
From the mountains.
From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. My home.
My home.
God bless America.
Land.
Land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above.
From the mountains.
From the mountains.
To the prairies.
To the prairies.
To the oceans white with foam.
God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. The New History Minstrels. If you are interested in their services, you can call them up at 503-260-3432. And now, we have Mr. Krupp, a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Dylan Blaylock from our Public and Governmental Affairs Department to come on up. He's not going to sing. He's going to give you a presentation on Clackamas County's participation in the National Association of Counties Live Healthy Program. So Dylan.
Yes. Thank you, County Administrator Krupp. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thanks for having me in today. As Mr. Krupp said, I'm gonna be talking about some new programs that are available to our residents in conjunction with the National Association of Counties. And I'll be talking about three today, but I'll be focusing on the first one listed there, the Prescription Discount Card Program. But I'll also touch on the Health Discount Program and Dental Discount Program. All these things are obviously healthcare-related. The Prescription Discount Card Program is a free service to all Clackamas County residents because Clackamas County is a member of the National Association of Counties. But it provides just that. It provides discounts on prescription drugs. So with a, with a simple card, that I'll get into how simple it is to just obtain, great, yep. You know, our residents can go in and to participating pharmacies, and there's a lot of them, and present the card and save money. It's, the program is aimed at uninsured and underinsured individuals in terms of healthcare. But really, anybody can, can sign up to get it and potentially save. If the, a person's prescription discount program, or prescription card program doesn't, you know, offer as much savings on a particular medication, 10%, they can alternatively use the card and maybe save, you know, 50% instead. So there's no reason that, that anybody in our, in our county shouldn't sign up for it. And as I'll go into, it's extremely easy to enroll in it. It takes less than two minutes. And also, for those who can't enroll online, there's a telephone number available, and then you just get it a few days after. So just to hit on, you know exactly how easy this is, I did it this morning. This is the main NACO page for signing up. And as you can see, there was a page before this where you just enter in your ZIP code, and NACO automatically knows that the person's from Clackamas County. You enter in your first name, your last name, and your email address, and that is it. That is all that's done. You get this, and you get to go ahead and print it out. It's got your name on it. It says Clackamas County, and it's ready to be used immediately. So you can just go into any participating pharmacy and start saving money. So it's, it's really a phenomenal service. And the value is, is pretty clear. You know, card users save an average of about 24% off the regular retail price. And again, that can just happen immediately. There's more than 50 pharmacies within Clackamas County that, that I counted that currently accept the card. 12 cities and some communities take it, including, just to show off again how easy it is to use for people, Boring, Canby, Clackamas, Estacada, Gladstone, Happy Valley, Lake Oswego, Milwaukee, Malala, Oak Grove, Oregon City, Sandy, Tuolton, Welch's, Westlin, and Wilsonville. So it's pretty accessible to, to anybody who wants it. And also touching on how individuals can use it who already have, you know, health insurance, that one aspect is that you can use it for pet medications as well. I know a lot of people don't have, you know, prescription coverage for their pets, but then all of a sudden you're in the situation. And you can go ahead and do it typically when the pet ailment and the medication you need is also similar to, you know, you can use it for a human condition. That's when it comes into play. So if you can use it on a pet for an antibiotic ointment or something, you can go ahead and use the card. And, and again, you, just to be clear, you can't use it in conjunction with existing healthcare. It's one or the other. So use it just instead, whichever the discount is greater. And from the other discount programs that, that NACO is offering include the Health Discount Program and the Dental Discount Program, which are also great programs in and of themselves. These ones are just different from the Prescription Discount Program because the Prescription Discount Program is free. These ones have a low cost attached to them, but it's reasonable because, you know, it's only $7 a person and $9 per family. But with the health programs, you can save on eye exams, eyeglass frames, LASIK, diabetic supplies, hearing issues. And then with the dental, you know, it's 15 to 50% savings on most procedures like checkups and fillings, and that can add up really quickly as far as savings go. So from PGA's standpoint, you know what we're involved in is the promotion of this, and we're gonna do heavy promotion over the course of the next two months. And this is just a very brief 30-second video that we've created for the channel and for social media.
...has teamed up with the National Association of Counties to bring its residents free discounts on prescription drugs. All residents can sign up online to receive a Prescription Drug Discount Card. Card users save an average of 24% on thousands of medications at more than 68,000 pharmacies nationwide. Log on to www.clackamas.us/livehealthy for more information and start saving today.
And I just bring this up because I know last week County Administrator Krupp relayed in his good news, you know, how successful we've been in the social media videos that we've been pushing. We get a lot of, you know, coverage on it. We get a lot of engagement. And so we've developed a, a social media campaign where we'll do probably four, maybe more ads like this at different parts, at different points over the next two months or so. And later today, we'll be, you know, putting out our, our press release. We're focusing on this program very prominently in the Citizen News. The new e-newsletter is going to feature it prominently on, in the first week of January because it's a great program. We wanna get it out to people. And the main thing that we're driving people toward is our, our webpage, which lists everything that, that somebody would want about the program and gets them directly to the NACO page where they can sign up. It was, it's off the front page of our website now, so it's very easy for people to use. And that's really it. I mean, it's a very straightforward program. I think it's great. I signed up for it. I encourage everybody to sign up for it. And yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Smith.
Well, thank you, Dylan. That was an excellent presentation. I'm very excited about this. I went back to NACO last winter and heard about this program, and I thought, well, that sounds too good to be true. And so I started asking around, and I was asking some of the Commissioners in my neighboring counties if they did it. And they says, yes, great, why haven't you guys done it? I says, well, I don't know. In Columbia County, for instance, they've saved, what, $500,000, and it's a very low population. And Tony Hyde was telling me, he says, well, Tulley, you probably in Clackamas County could save citizens, at least in the first year, $2 million on their discounted prescriptions and services. And so I think Clackamas is one of the larger counties, the largest county in Oregon so far, that's doing this. It's just a little added incentive for people to go and take care of themselves. Here's the brochures that we have, and maybe you can, here's the brochure, and then here is, where's the camera at? Anyway, here is the card. There you go. Here's the card. You just take out one card per family and present it. And like you say, it's so easy. Go online, call the phone number, and there we go. And thank you, and I wanna thank staff for working on this and taking care of everything.
I believe one of the features of it is that we were able to receive a dollar per prescription. Or we would waive that and allow the person filling their subscription to realize the cost benefit. And so we chose the latter, so people will be able to save that additional dollar. But it's a great program. Yeah, I look forward to people using it. And please note that it did say that even though you, you have insurance coverage, including this drug coverage, this could even save you some beyond that. So it's worth getting and submitting to your local pharmacist.
Yes.
Yeah, and just in addition, I think it's really directed at people who don't have insurance or are underinsured, and the copays are so high on it. And it's a deal with, the drug companies have partnered in with this.
Right.
Have partnered in with this and making it a good program. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Dylan. Appreciate it. Mr. Krupp, we now have three public hearings.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chair. Did you want to do Citizens Communication first?
Oh, oh, that one guy there, yeah. So Citizens Communication, it is the Steve Shop.
My name's Steve Shop. I live in Tuolton. Despite the pleasantries before me, I did come here to be mean. Somebody has to. Might as well be me. I'm more concerned beyond live healthy, grow healthy. And when I see what's going on and around the region here, over the last many, many years of watching this and reading recent op-ads by Tom Hughes, Metro President, and watching the struggle here to identify 50-year designations on land, I, I'm just flummoxed and wondering what planet we're on. When we have, years ago, when the designations were being formed, the most respected friends and stakeholders in the region wrote, "Metro's plan threatens our economic future. They fail to account for where we and, and we and our children will work and how we'll be able to locate traded sector employers." The Coalition of Prosperous Region, which is the Portland Business Alliance, the Westside Economic Alliance, all the business groups, all the friends of the establishment around here, representing every bone of any significance whatsoever, calling for, what? We should provide more flexibility for future decision-makers by including more undesignated land. What could be more simple? And, and yet, it was completely ignored in 2011. Another letter in 2014. There's been a consortium of Mayor's Right, the Port of Portland Right. It's almost as if there can be no recognition of anything other than the drumbeat coming from Metro. So what about Metro? We're supposed to believe that they've been doing things right all these years. Tom Hughes writes how we have enough land for everything. Everything's going swimmingly well. Well, that's just simply not the case. And if I had more than three minutes, I could spend an hour here detailing you with, with absolute factual demonstration of how they've blown everything. And here in Clackamas County, I think all the county Commissioners have acknowledged the, the debacle of Damascus. So how does an organization in charge of regional planning tell you with any credibility that they know how much land is available and needed when they cheated by including 10,000 acres in the UGB expansion when they knew nothing would ever happen? That's an admission by the previous Metro President, David Bragdon. He told a reporter that they knew when they did that, it was never gonna work. You flash forward, and you look at the urban rural reserves. How in the world, because the same, can the same entity have any credibility when they designate urban reserves in Boring and yet rural reserves next to I-5? The evidence is everywhere that Metro has it wrong. They have it wrong in, in every conceivable way, recognized by just about everybody involved. And, you know, I'm not paid by anybody to come here. I've studied this issue for years. I'm not paid by Plaid Pantry, as Martha suggested one time when I was here. I'm not paid by the Molidus Brothers, or the Koch Brothers, or anyone else. But I tell you what, there's a lot of material here that demonstrates that you could cut through the fog. And I really am kind of embarrassed that you don't have your staff do a better job. They are paid. They could have a collection of things that would make it crystal clear that you, as county Commissioners representing Clackamas County, should stand firm and not simply roll over for Metro's desires. And if I could finish with this, I'm sitting there listening to Charlotte Lehan and Tim Knapp. You all know who they are, Wilsonville City Council, Mayor, discussing in an effort to calm the fears of their citizenry, who are looking at another huge swath of area that the city is gearing up to duplicate Villeboise. They don't want the densities. And then to dispel their fear, Charlotte Lehan and Tim Knapp lectured them on what? On the lack of predictability of forecasting what could happen. They went through detail of, look, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know year to year. It could be a couple of years. Everything could change. Everything could change. We have no idea. Villeboise, Charlotte detailed how it didn't turn out as it was planned because none of the commercial stuff was, the market wouldn't support it. So my, my question is, how can the Commission and the planners in Metro ignore the immense hypocrisy and contradiction? With, if you can't decide and know a couple of years in advance what's gonna be needed or what's gonna happen, why would you ever proceed with designated land in a 50-year hold? It, it just boggles the mind. And whether or not it's out there in Molidus land, which, you know, all these horribly corrupt people, I mean, give me a break. This is what it's come down to? Accusations of some of you being corrupt? You're no more corrupt than Jim and his, and his fine father was because they owned property in Milwaukee. It's ridiculous. And what planet are we on? There is pristine, perfect farmland out in Hillsboro next to a freeway. Does it sound familiar? Metro just expanded their boundary out there to accommodate a 1,000-acre urban renewal plan to spend $176 million to create what? An industrial park next to the freeway.
You're gonna have to wrap it up, Steve. It's lovely, but...
In Clackamas County, the contradiction is crazy. You know, you've all heard of the Canby Pioneer Industrial Park, touted for years, as long as I've been an active in Clackamas County, as a model of an urban renewal industrial park and everything else. It laid fallow. You just lost seven and a half acres of industrial land with all the infrastructure already put in because they rezoned it for apartments. Probably because it's too far from I-5, like Boring is.
You just set a record on taking more time than I've ever allowed.
One final sentence. When the designations were made, isn't it something that the Molidus property, because it's south of the river, has rural designation? And even though Boring has urban designation out there, right across the street from that designation way out in Boring is more Molidus property, which Charlotte Lehan and the, and the planners at Metro designated rural. I guess they just don't like those brothers, do they? Well, what about the county in growing healthy? Let's try to do a better job. And I, I would suggest have your staff do a better job because they should have all of this front and center, and you would know crystal clear what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shop. And now, Mr. Krupp, we really do have three public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first public hearing involves the reading and adoption of a board order that would amend local contract review board rules. Mr. Stephen Madcor will give a brief report on this for you.
Thank you, Administrator Krupp. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. We have before you an order which amends the local contract review board rules to delegate authority to the county administrator or his designee to sign contracts and contract amendments during the board's hiatus, which they'll be taking a break for the next, for two weeks from the...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of December?
Starts the 18th, yeah. Starts the 18th.
Okay, well, we have it the 21st is how this one is dated. So December 21st through January 4th is when the delegation of authority is to...
That's the Monday, so I understand.
Is to the county administrator. And you do this twice a year when you go on break. So this is just a temporary suspension of the rules. And the county administrator, if he does sign anything, he will report back to the board at your next meeting in January 7th of any contracts or contract amendments he has signed. So we're asking that the board approve it and that we have a single reading of the title only.
I move we read the board order by title only.
Second.
Second. Well, we're a little ahead of ourselves. I need a public hearing first, so let's have that. All right. Do any of the commissioners have any clarifying questions?
No.
All right. I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. All right. I'll close the public hearing now. Go ahead.
I don't see anybody. I move, we read the board order by title only.
Second. So, the motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard, to read the board order by title only. So, further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes four zero. I'll ask the clerk to assign a board number and read the board order by title only.
Okay, this is going to be board order number 2015-124, in the matter of amending local contract review board rules, Appendix C of the Clackamas County Code.
All right. So, the motion.
I move, we adopt the board order amending local contract review board rules, County Code, Appendix C.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Savas. Any further discussion? Mary.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes four zero. So, I will ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance in full.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance number 10-2015, an ordinance amending Chapter, or, I'm sorry, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 2.05, Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees and Declaring an Emergency. Whereas, the County Code must be updated to comply with the new state law requirements regarding sick leave. Now, therefore, the Board of County, the Board of Commissioners of Clackamas County amends the Clackamas County Code as follows. The Board of Commissioners of Clackamas County ordains as follows. Section 1, Chapter 2.05, Personnel Policies and Procedures of the Clackamas County Code is hereby, as shown on Exhibit A, attached Tier 2 and incorporated herein by the reference, adopted this 10th day of December 2015, Board of County Commissioners.
All right. I'll ask for the motion.
I move, we read the ordinance in full.
Second. I motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard, to read the ordinance in full. Any further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes four zero. So, I will ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance in full.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance number 10-2015, an ordinance amending Chapter, or, I'm sorry, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 2.05, Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees and Declaring an Emergency. Whereas, the County Code must be updated to comply with the new state law requirements regarding sick leave. Now, therefore, the Board of County, the Board of Commissioners of Clackamas County amends the Clackamas County Code as follows. The Board of Commissioners of Clackamas County ordains as follows. Section 1, Chapter 2.05, Personnel Policies and Procedures of the Clackamas County Code is hereby, as shown on Exhibit A, attached Tier 2 and incorporated herein by the reference, adopted this 10th day of December 2015, Board of County Commissioners.
All right. I'll ask for the motion.
I move, we adopt ordinance number 10-2015, amending Chapter 2.05, Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees related to state law changes regarding sick leave and declaring emergency.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Savas. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes four zero. We're on number three.
Yes, so the third public hearing involves a resolution to consider the Clackamas County supplemental budget. Our budget manager, Diane Padi, is here to explain the proposal.
Good morning. This is our second supplemental budget of greater than 10% in budget reduction for the year 1516. The themes are the same as for the first supplemental budget. The vast majority are truing up their fund balance, recognizing the actual carryforward versus the estimate. And the other thing that's happening in some of them is that we are reclassifying. Traditionally, we had paid for pass-through of money to another entity as materials and services item, and it's supposed to be classified as a special payment. So, we are making those adjustments in various places to move the money to where we should account for it. The first item is in the general fund, not allocated to organizational unit, particularly water environment services payroll here. Budget is being reduced, and the soils management program is moving to transportation and development. Along with that, four positions formerly in water environment services will now be budgeted as part of code enforcement, resource conservation, and solid waste beginning in January. And in the general fund, it's a reduction of $222,000. Excuse me. Business and Community Services is recognizing additional fund balance of $204,635 and budgeting it in contingency for county fair. In this next one, we printed incorrectly in the staff report, it should be not allocated to organizational unit in the county school fund. We're budgeting a transfer to county schools, recognizing fund balance and budgeting the transfer. Here, it says Business and Community Services, which I guess we just carried over from the line above. The information is correct in the exhibits, and the accounting is correct, but county schools is not in fact a Business and Community Services organization. Transportation and Development is recognizing lower than anticipated fund balance and salary reimbursement revenue, and reducing contingency for building codes in the amount of $72,292. Business and Community Services is recognizing additional fund balance, revenue from other internal county services, and the Urban Lumber Pilot Program, and budgeting for program and project costs and contingency for economic development. The total is $1,080,000. $1,080,176. Thank you, Mary. The Law Library is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting it in contingency. The amount is $110,618. Transportation and Development is recognizing additional fund balance and grant revenue, and reduced inter-fund transfer revenue, and adjusting program costs, contingency reserves, and inter-fund transfer expense accordingly for roads. The total here is $5,031,518, 4.8 million of which is a true of a fund balance. Sheriff is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting for personnel costs. It is also reclassifying how it accounts for payments to other governments and agencies. The increase here is $1,322,082. Transportation and Development is creating a budget for the soils program and also recognizing additional fund balance and contingency in code enforcement, resource conservation, and solid waste. The addition is $710,490. Transportation and Development is recognizing additional fund balance and tax title land revenue, and budgeting for administrative costs associated with the property disposition program and foreclosed property Brownsfield Reserve. The increase here is $667,815. District Attorney is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting for personnel costs and building improvement costs at the Multnomah Lodge and Butler Buildings for an increase of $362,768. Justice Court is recognizing additional fund balance, reducing contingency, and increasing its transfer to the general fund for a total of $456,697. Transportation and Development is recognizing additional fund balance and inter-fund transfer revenue from the Happy Valley Clackamas Joint Transportation Fund, and budgeting for debt service and contingency in the countywide transportation SDC. The amount here is $3,502,353, most of it again in fund balance. Transportation and Development is recognizing additional fund balance and internal county reimbursement revenue, and budgeting in contingency for public land corners, $433,905. Transportation and Development is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting for an inter-fund transfer to the countywide transportation SDC fund I mentioned above, and contingency, and the increase is $873,891. To clarify, most of it is fund balance and 800,000, well, no, I'm wrong. 800,000 is for fund balance and the rest is for transfer. Health Housing and Human Services is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting to add a full-time policy analyst senior position and program costs for Health, Housing, and Human Services Administration, total of $372,829. Health, Housing, and Human Services is recognizing prior year community mental health program revenue and budgeting for costs associated with the program, and also reclassifying payments to subrecipients for behavioral health. The increase is $566,124. Health, Housing, and Human Services is realigning expenditures to better reflect actual costs and reclassifying payments to subrecipients for community development. It is a net change of zero. Health, Housing, and Human Services is recognizing lower than anticipated fund balance and reducing contingency for the health centers, a decrease of $202,908. Business and Community Services is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting it in contingency for forest management, an increase of $183,128. Transportation and Development is recognizing an inter-fund transfer from roads and also recognizing lower than anticipated fund balance and reducing contingency and capital outlay for the DTD Capital Projects Fund, a decrease of $217,266. Getting close. Business and Community Services is recognizing additional fund balance and budgeting for new radios and a security system, and contingency for the Stone Creek Golf Course in the amount of $386,987. Emergency Communications is reclassifying payments to other governments and agencies for central dispatch, a net change of zero. And finally, Human Resources is reclassifying payments to other governments and agencies and self-insurance, again, a net change of zero. The total effect of all these changes is an increase in appropriations of $15,824,347. Of that, approaching 13 million is true of a fund balance. I would be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? All right. I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move, we approve the resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than 10% and budget reductions for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. All right. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an amendment to the agreement with Clackamas County Children's Commission, Inc., for screening and home visiting services for high-risk families. The Finance Department, we have a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2015-2016. A resolution for Clackamas County for budgeting of new specific purpose revenue for fiscal year 2015-2016. A resolution for Clackamas County for transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2015-2016. A resolution affirming that Clackamas County 2015-2016 fiscal year budget is appropriated by organization unit. Under Business and Community Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Milwaukee for the Metro Community Planning and Development Grant, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Metro for the Metro Community Planning and Development Grant. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the Department of Emergency Management, approval of Subrecipient Grant Agreement 16-023 between Clackamas County Emergency Management Department and Oregon Department of Forestry, North Cascades District for Fire Wise Communities Program. Under our North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, we have a resolution for North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for a supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2015-2016. Under the Library District of Clackamas County, a resolution for the Library Service District for a supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2015-2016. And the Enhanced Law Enforcement District, a resolution for an Enhanced Law Enforcement District supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2015-2016. And that concludes the consent agenda for today.
All right. Commissioners, do you want to remove any of those items? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Savas. Any further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes four to zero. And now, this is excitement time. It's county administrator informational update. Let's call it that.
You know, I'd feel better if I had that Santa's cap to share that one.
Buddy, I'm all over that. Triple dog dare you.
Might as well get in the holiday spirit.
At least you got hair. It was beautiful. Yeah.
So, I've got three items to share with you this morning. You know, you know that our departments have been working on Performance Clackamas, which is our results-driven strategic planning process. The Department of Transportation and Development, which was one of the first departments to do this work, is now able to report their first quarter findings of some of their measurements, of their results that they are planned for in their strategic business plan. I just thought I'd share a few of these. For the first quarter of this fiscal year, our land use, development, and permitting staff received and responded to more than 13,600 emails. They received and responded to about 34,000 telephone inquiries, interacted face-to-face with the public more than 29,000 times, performed nearly 12,300 inspections, and issued more than 5,400 permits. So, I share this with you to let you know and our residents know that this is the kind of information our Performance Clackamas effort is intended to provide. We'll be having information available on the website as the program progresses. And of course, all the departments are undergoing this transition to be able to have measurable results that show that we're more accountable, accessible, and efficient as a county government. The next item I have is from Health, Housing, and Human Services. The Housing Authority received about $99,000 from the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department. This is a grant that will help us hire on one and a half full-time employees to help Section 8 families become more self-sufficient by enrolling these families in HUD's Family Self-Sufficiency Program. So, this is where members of low-income families are provided with opportunities to be able to access education, job training, and other assistance. So, that's a great opportunity and great work with our Housing Authority staff. And then, finally, I will share this, the commissioners are already aware of this, but I think it's worth sharing with the public, and that is that last week, President Obama signed into law a five-year transportation funding package that includes the designation of Interstate 205 between Stafford Road and Highway 99E in Oregon City as a high-priority corridor. Now, that doesn't involve money immediately, but what the designation will do is make any future funding requests for improvement projects on this stretch more competitive. So, this is a big victory for Clackamas County, and it certainly is worth giving kudos to our Government Affairs Team and PGA for the work... our Government Affairs Team and PGA for the work they did to help make this happen. As you know, the Interstate 205 Expansion Project is one of our top transportation priorities, and special thanks to Congressman Kurt Schrader for introducing the concept in the House with support by Congressman Peter DeFazio. And also thanks to Senators Ron Wyden and Jeff Merkley for ensuring that the language survived in the Senate. That's my report this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. And now it's time for Commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. The flooding was certainly challenging for many of us this last week. Our EOC went into operations immediately to try to help people with their individual situations. Some people at the county were affected, had to take detours, but it was good practice for our emergency operations. They have now disbanded, and now we're going into the cleanup phase and evaluation phase of our roads. We escaped a bullet, I think, because the second day was supposed to bring more rains, and that did not happen, thank you very much. And so if you have any problems or updates, our staff does a very good job of posting on, geez, I'm having trouble today, Facebook. Facebook, and you can go online to get reports. There's a banner at the very top of our webpage to get updated information. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Well, I want to just touch on a little bit of the discussion at J-PAC this morning, which stands for the Joint Policy Advisory Commission on Transportation. And as the Administrator touched on, the new FAST legislation that was passed to reauthorize spending and so forth. It was shared there, as was yesterday morning at the Clackamas County Business Alliance, that our opportunity to capture some of that funding is really critical in the sense that in order for the proper phase and the timing, we're going to need matching funds. And matching funds is something that comes up in projects large and small when we're asking, applying for grants, that minimum matching funds amount is typically 10.27%. And in this case, with this legislation, it's 40%. So we're going to have to work hard and fast to find matching funds in order to fund whatever opportunities come forth with 205, as is pointed out in this legislation and declared a high priority. So a lot of discussion this morning at J-PAC on that same issue, whether it's 205 and other elements of the package. So everyone's scrambling to sort out what that means and how to implement it and capitalize on that funding. And fortunately, the price per gallon of gasoline is down compared to where it was a year ago. It's uncertain if that'll stand, how long it'll stand, but we certainly know that congestion on our highways is at an all-time high. I think driving in to Portland Metro meeting this morning, it took me an extra 10 minutes. I don't know why. There was some rain, but it wasn't that bad. But it is certainly not getting any better along the 99E corridor, and I know that other corridors and travel destinations for folks, it was a tough morning, as I heard on the radio. So we're still working hard to figure out how we apply limited funding. I think that's the key. The funding for transportation solutions is limited, and I know we're all scrambling to figure out where we get new resources to solve those problems. That's what I have for this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
So wanted to mention that, you know, we had some singers today. On my vacation, I picked up a ukulele, and maybe next year, Don, you and I could do a Christmas song. I'll play the ukulele and you play your guitar.
You played already?
I am taking online lessons.
Really?
I've already got Wizard of Oz, Somewhere Over the Rainbow. I've learned quite a bit of it already. It's kind of fun. I've played guitar years ago, and I played jazz piano and classical piano, but I was never any good at any of those. So I'm trying to really concentrate on something, a small instrument I can take around the world. I know you play the harp, right?
I'm just kidding. I play the harmonica, thank you, and I play guitar, so there...
We'll have to maybe do something next year, be kind of fun. You know, Steve Schop's comments, and many of those, his comments, I agree with. Counting Damascus has been a big mistake. I was at the floor when that Damascus was brought in, and I know that it was just a way to appease Clackamas County's concerns when I heard many times, "It's our turn to bring land in," never considering the possibility that it wouldn't be able to be served. And that's the sad part, is we are, that's counted against us, and we need to do something about that. Whether Damascus dissolves as a city or not, it's still in the UGB, and we're going to have some tough decisions on how we're going to deal with that issue and the expense of dealing with that issue. At one point, actually, there was some great discussions going on in Damascus, and it looked very hopeful under some formerly leadership, but that's not where it is today. And, you know, Damascus could reconstitute as a smaller community. I think they took on a lot, and with Happy Valley's interest in some portions of that, that's, that'll be great. Another problem is annexation votes. I mean, we are counted for property that has sat in the, in our UGB for many years and counted against us, and we need to somehow address that problem, and that's a tough The transportation bill, I think it's important to note that when the chair first came on, we talked about the Columbia River Crossing and decided as a, as a commission to focus on what was important for Clackamas County. And there are two important things, but as a regional concern, as a statewide concern, and maybe multi-state concern, is I-205. And because of our efforts at AOC, we got the whole state to sign on that 205 was a priority. And thanks to our representatives in Washington, D.C., and here at the county, and with Paul at J-PAC, and, you know, other statewide committees, it's on a list. And, but I think it's also important to note that I don't think Clackamas County is the one who needs to match on this. The legislature needs to pass a transportation bill, and that's where the match should come from, because while this is important to Clackamas County, we don't own the road. But, you know, we, we need to focus on Clackamas County's priority, and that's the completion of Sunrise Phase Two. And that's a long ways off. Sunrise Phase One is coming along pretty well. I've been checking it out every time I drive down, and it is coming along well. It's bigger than we, well, I'd ever agreed with the plan in the first place, but it's bigger than it was planned, and has more lanes, thanks to last year's Christmas gift. Maybe we should anticipate something this year from ODOT.
From ODOT, sure.
Yeah, so anyway, so I'm excited about that, but we still need to focus on Clackamas County's priority, which is Phase Two of Sunrise, which opens up a bunch of industrial land and an opportunity that we've been all waiting for, I don't remember, 15 years or so, something like that, Sunrise Phase Two, and we have some property acquisition to get there. I just wanted to mention that Tourism has a new program called Fish Finder. So if you're a fisherman in Clackamas County, they've been working on mapping the rivers, noting where the best fish spots are and what lure to use. And they've been working with somebody in the profession on that, but staff has been developing, working on this a lot. I think it might be live, but it still has some glitches, and, and it's not really that accessible on your, on your cellphone yet, but that'll get adapted or fixed. So that's kind of exciting, something new, not been done before. And so I, I love fishing, I don't do much river fishing here. They need to stretch that map out to, on the coast. But fishing's an important tourism activity that takes place in Clackamas County, and this might just provide greater opportunity for fishermen throughout Clackamas County to come home with a fish. And by the way, there's no guarantees. So...
Darn it, anyway, no guarantees.
Yeah, no guarantees. So wanted to mention a dog we have at the kennel named Carson, which happens to be the name of your son. Maybe this dog was named after your son.
Look at him.
There's a smile on his face.
My son's coming up for the weekend, maybe we'll run down to the dog shelter and have Carson meet Carson.
Yeah, it's a very nice dog. One of my dogs that I have is somewhat, I think, half this breed. Looks quite a bit like it, at least in the face and the ears. But anyway, Carson is an Australian cattle dog mix and is the prime example of a working dog. He is smiley, intelligent, and full of life at six years old. His half-blue, half-brown eye makes you wonder which way he's looking. But he walks a straight line, okay, but he walks a straight line. It's not a criminal, in other words.
That's right.
Carson would enjoy going home with you and be part of your life and property, and would, wouldn't mind working for his keep. Wonder if he does tax preparation. He hopes his next visitor is you. For more information about Carson and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or visit us at the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs. If you don't call him, he'll be calling you. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, tonight is the Fair Board, always interesting, I'll be going to that. Next Monday will be the Oregon Business Council Summit. I think the majority of the Commissioners will be attending there. They'll also have some Association of Oregon County meetings, specifically the Legislative Committee. Next week, we'll also have the Elected Officials Luncheon. It's always great to get together with all the elected officials in Clackamas County. And next Thursday will be our evening meeting. It'll start at 6:00 P.M. And then we'll be, as mentioned, taking a recess from, that's right, the 21st, although it feels like that Thursday, but some of our employees still work on Fridays. But from the 21st until January 3rd, till next year. Some of the highlights, and again, a reminder to people, if you want to see work sessions or policy sessions, those are on Tuesdays, and they're separated into subjects, so you don't have to listen to all of our meeting, but just that portion that you're interested in. And this work, we worked on the reserves work plan update. This is where the Board has, by majority, decided that we would try to alter the map that Metro says is cast in stone and get some additional lands in there, considering that the, as Mr. Schop mentioned, for 50 years, the proposal is to tie up lands around the greater Portland metropolitan areas, and I think we have to be very judicious about that process. We went forward with a 5% goal to save energy in this county, you know? With this big of a county and this many buildings, it doesn't take a lot of little things to add up to a lot of money. And so that was a rather interesting goal, and they told us of how they'd saved money previously, and it was very interesting. The Economic Development Commission presented their annual review. They did an excellent job of outreach into 100 businesses here in Clackamas County, talking to them about their future and about their needs. And I think they just did an outstanding job, and they'll be doing similar work this next year. We also talked about our records policy, and we've got some work to do on that. But we are mandated by law to save certain records for a certain amount of time. Unfortunately, a lot of those records are spread throughout this county in different departments. And as we learned in '96, when Big Blue flooded, and I just went by there, Abernathy Creek yesterday, by the way, and it was somewhat subdued to what it was in previous days, but that was when the county officers were located down on Abernathy, and unfortunately, they were not able, because of the suddenness of the rise of the water, to retain the records that were flooded, and that has caused lots of problems in the ensuing years, that we don't have those records on hand to say what was approved and what wasn't approved. You know, there was a mention of 205 here, and I want to emphasize to people, again, Metro's role primarily is planning and transportation. Now, planning, we have difficulties here in Clackamas County with the current political makeup with Metro, but on I-205, it is absolutely, and like Jim said, it's great that the AOC joined with us and said how important it was at 205, if for no other reason, it's a freight corridor, be improved. And Metro has said conversely all along that, "Why build it? It would just fill up." Now, that's the kind of mentality, unfortunately, that Metro has. In the face of everybody in the rest of the state saying, "You've got to fix this problem," they say, "You don't need more lanes," and probably that you need more trains. And so it's a shame that, that a whole bunch of people came together and affected a change, especially, by the way, those, those congresspeople, including Schrader, that put this proposal together to elevate the status of this need on I-205. And it's a shame that our partners at Metro don't recognize that we absolutely do need better transportation, and that doesn't mean the disproportionate share they've been spending on light rail for years without a public vote. This means that we need more lanes, and it's not just on 205 either. More connectivity needs to be done. You're out there, folks. Has traffic gotten better in the last several years, or much, much worse? As Commissioner Savis mentioned, just local trips now add additional minutes. I don't know what it was this morning, but, well, there's a landslide up on 205, on I-5 that blocked the entire thing, and so there's been slides on Highway 30, slides all over the place. And let me just point out to you about water real quick, which is kind of interesting. The highest rainfall in Clackamas County over that three-day period was a place called Blazed Alter. They got 8.9 inches. Now, here in Oregon City, we got 5.8, but here's some whoppers. Clatsup County, at the coast, 9.15 inches. Bonito Dam, 14 inches in three days. And the winner, Tillamook Lee's Camp, that's right there, that little place to eat is, 18 inches of rain in three days. That's just astounding. And so for those of you who've been affected by this, and I hope you took pictures of where those low spots were, and be sure to avoid them the next time it happens, because they are saying to some that this is what they call a 100-year event, because they have 25, 50, and 100-year events. But the way I count it, it can't be a 100-year event, because we had 1964, we had 1996, and now we've had another 100-year event. Those aren't 100-year events, those are like 25-year events, the way I look at it. So be prepared, be ready. Oftentimes, you know, and if you want some great information, go to our website and look up at our Emergency Operations Center. They have some great information on how to better prepare yourself for every eventuality, and I strongly suggest you do that, because a lot of people lost power, certainly a lot of people were flooded out, and certainly there's a lot of people just couldn't go from point A to point B, no ways around. So anyway, again, the reminder that next week's meeting is an evening meeting at 6:00, and I hope you enjoyed the music this morning. We tried to get the high school group to come this next week, but unfortunately, their school's out, and I don't blame them for not wanting to come here and sing. But ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you listening and watching today. There being no further business before the Commission, this day, this meeting is adjourned.